Good afternoon Harlem and Harlems of the world. I am Terry Wisdom. And on this great Sunday, this is Harlem Network News. As many of you know Harlem Network News started at the onset of COVID. And we are still here. We know that we are doing essential work. As often what happens here in our community and the Harlems of the world is not covered. So it's very critical. And back in 2020, can't believe it's three years. We just jumped in the deep water. My background is in film, television, media. But when I heard black folks walking around Harlem saying, I'm black, I can't get it. It's like, okay, you know, we, we gotta get in here now. And we have stood firm ever since. Today, we just move forward. I wanna pay homage and honor to one of our great artists, photographers, Tommy Braithwaite, who has transitioned. His homegoing will be at the Abyssinian Baptist Church next Monday, the 24th. Viewing at nine, service at 10. We're just grateful we were able to partake and get the great book that he put out of all his photographs, the Black is Beautiful exhibit. Very powerful, the Grand Dasa models, his wife Sacolo, his son, his daughter. I was very active in doing that. And there's even a film by Louise Dent of Cultural Caravan. That is on the Black is Beautiful movement that features Tommy Braithwaite, his brother Alonbe, several other artists, the late Bob Gumm. So we are just honored and pay tribute. And we know that he's watching over us, making sure that we stay on point and on focus. He is with his good friend and colleague, the Reverend Dr. Calvin. So just wanna say that and prayers for all of those in our community that have lost their life. There's so much going on. But we have here today, the Honorable Assembly Member Inez Dickens. And as many of you may know, she is running for the City Council in District Nine. And this is part of our City Council series. We are, have invited every person who's running for City Council to join us. We're asking the same questions of each candidate so that our constituents and voters can get a clear idea. So, so far we have interviewed Youssef Salam, Dr. Youssef Salam. And today we have the Honorable Assembly Member Inez Dickens. And we look to interview the Assembly Member, Dr. Reverend Al Taylor. And I wanna offer our condolences if he has lost his father.
Yes.
Just with prayers, all of those who are now art in heaven. So thank you for that. And we also have invited our sitting councilperson, Christian Richardson-Jordan. We hope that she will. So without further ado, Assembly Member Inez Dickens, please tell us who you are and whose you are. Let's start with that because we wanna make sure that our audience is informed. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mother Earth. How are you? It's so good to be on Harlem Network News once again. Important that we continue to be able to put forth the news as it pertains truthfully to the Harlems of the world. And that's what you do. I'm Inez E. Dickens. I am born and bred in Harlem, never lived anywhere else. I come from a political family that before it became sexy, believed in generational wealth. That it is secured through political and economic empowerment. And that's what generation after generation has been taught from my great grandparents. And my grandparents returned to New York from Oklahoma to go back to Africa with Marcus Garvey. That's how we wound up in New York in, in 1914. Is coming from Oklahoma to go to join back. In fact, we had bought into, my family had bought into the Black Star Line in order to participate and to help the survival of the shipping. So that many of us could return. However, we know through history what actually occurred with the American government and with the New York State and New York City government in arresting the Honorable Marcus Garvey and the prevention and destruction of the Black Star Line. But that's how we got here. And then, and once that was destroyed, my family, my grandparents, my great grandparents believed that you cash your buckets down where you are. Which is part of the legacy of the Christmas Attic, if anyone really knows.
Okay.
They believed in the cash your buckets down. And so they stayed. And, and decided to get involved, get jobs, and eventually to, to begin to buy buildings, small buildings, it weren't big buildings, small buildings in Harlem. So that they could be renovated. And they had hired white people to front for them at banks because blacks could not get loans.
This is all our untold history and our untold stories. We thank you.
Not get, get loans. And they hired white people to represent them at, at closing. So that they really, the banks thought they were giving it to white people. When actually it was black people, my family that was actually getting the loans and paying them back, by the way.
Okay.
That's really paying them back. And ultimately, we renovated every building that they owned. And did things that had never been done in Harlem. And because that's just what it was transitioning when black people were moving into Harlem. There was a lot of white people in Harlem at that time. And so, black people were moving into Harlem. And my family believed in renovating the buildings and putting in air conditioners and things that was not done in Harlem and particularly for, for black families. And so that's, that's the history of the start. My father served as the New York State Assembly Person in the 1960s. My uncle, his youngest brother, who ultimately became Supreme Court Justice Thomas K. Dickens, he served in the Assembly in the 1940s. And that was, he was, I think, the second, the first, of course, being Reverend Dr. Adam Clayton Powell was the first black man. But my uncle, I believe, was the second to serve in the Assembly. And just little unknown, little history, the first black woman was Bessie Buchanan, who was from the district around where Denny Farrell's district was, the 71st Assembly District. Was, that was principally her district. And she was the first black woman. And that came out of Harlem, by the way. Just some extra history there.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing.
Because actually, do you know, in Albany, they did not know about Bessie Buchanan?
That's, that's why.
They found I was telling the truth. When they looked at the records, they found Bessie Buchanan.
Okay. The network news audience, remember, Bessie Buchanan.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, that's where I come from. That's my history, where I come out of. And I continue to believe in generational wealth, whether it's sexy to others or not. It is the truth in the country that we live in, in the world that we live in. And it kept, it has to be done through economic and political empowerment. They go hand in hand, by the way. And so I have worked hard at doing that first for 12 years in the New York City Council. From 2006, January 2006, until 2016, term limited. I ran for an open seat, the 70th Assembly District, which was held by then Assembly Member and now County Leader, New York County Leader Keith Wright, who decided not to run for that seat, but instead concentrate on running for the Congressional Seat that had been held by Congressman Charles Rangel. I ran for the open seat unopposed, which had been unheard of. I ran unopposed for that seat. And I, I won, obviously, that no one ran against me. And that was in 2016. I took the seat in January of 2017. And I've been serving in the New York State Assembly ever since then. During that time, the, who had been the, who I had gotten, who I won the New York City Council seat, not from, because he was term limited out, was Bill Perkins. Instead went to the New York State Senate, not the Assembly, but the Senate.
Okay.
And I, he was in the Senate, I was in the City Council, which to me is the most important seat politically that we have of all three levels of government, city, state, federal. That's because in the New York City Council, you're able to actually put resources in your district. Whereas on the state level, you gotta concentrate statewide, federal, throughout the country and internationally. But the City Council, you can actually concentrate on your district. And what you can do to help and enhance your district. And so to me, the New York City Council is the most important and critical seat that we have of all three levels that can produce, that it doesn't produce a lot of bills, a lot of laws. But it does provide resources to your district. And that's what makes it important. Most things come out of the state. Bail reform, a lot of the housing issues, etc., come out of the state. But actually, resources are put in through the New York City Council. So that's why it's critical and most important. I have served honorably in both houses. So I'm quite familiar, of course, with the way the very convoluted and confusing system of the budgeting process of this New York City Council. However, because I served for 12 years, I'm, I know exactly how it works. I've been there, done that. Coming out of a pandemic, which has been horrific on all the Harlems of, of the world. We've lost a lot of small businesses. We've lost a lot of people. And we don't need a, a new person, a neophyte. There is no learning curve. It's only a two, two-year term this time because of redistricting. Or there is a four-year term, but this time it's a two-year term. And so because of that, there's no learning curve. Because it takes you, you go in for two terms. You learn, it takes you two years to learn anything, the system. Because everything is autonomous. No one's gonna really educate you. Your colleagues are not gonna educate you. Because if they do, then they're taking away resources from their district to help you get something. So it'll really help you.
Wow, that's amazing. The information and the knowledge that you are dropping, as we say. I'm Terry Wisdom, for those of you who are just joining us. And this is Harlem Network News. And we are continuing with our Candidates Series for City Council District Nine. And today we are honored to have with us the Honorable Assembly Member Inez Dickens. And thank you for really giving us an overview of what the City Council handles as opposed to what the Assembly or the State and really speaking about how critical the budgeting and money factor is in the City Council in terms of directly coming into the community. I think that's very significant. You said something about the term now being two years for City Council, which it used to be four years.
It's still four years, except for redistricting. It's two years this time, two years the last time, two years this time. And then it go, you have to run after two years. And you will then get a four-year and then a second four-year. It's only two years, which is eight years this time. You would be getting actually 12 years if maximum. And minimally, you would be able to get 10 years this time. It's only because of redistricting.
Because of redistricting. So I'm, I'm not clear. And I wanna make sure the audience is clear. Why would redistricting affect the time of the term?
Well, because what happens with the redistricting, it's based upon the census. And the census is that every 10 years, like 2010, 2020, 2030, etc.
Okay.
So it really takes two years for the numbers to be calculated and put together. And, and to actually supposedly, I'll say supposedly have the actual numbers of those that reside. It doesn't, it's not about citizenship. Or it's about who actually lives in each district.
In each district.
So it takes two years. So that's why redistricting, it's only become, and that's always been, it's always, it's a two-year term during the redistricting, right after the census.
Right after. Okay, right after the census. Thank you for that clarification. Because I think it's extremely important, particularly in Harlem and the Harlems of the world, that we are informed, a knowledge is power. So many things are happening. A lot of people are just overwhelmed with just survival, given the economic and health and educational disparities. So we want Harlem Network News to be a place where they can be clear and get that information. So Assembly Member Inez Dickens, you have decided that it's very important for you to take a stand and run for City Council of District, of District Nine. And you did explain why City Council is so important. But I'm jumping some of the questions. You've explained what happens in the City Council and what the City Council does. What are some of the critical issues that are on the table with City Council right now, you know, or in the past year or so, that made you feel that it was important that you get back into the race for the City Council?
All right. Mother Earth, this, this goes back to the importance of the City Council. The City Council is unable to do a lot of bills. Like I said, a lot of bills come out of Albany. That impact upon the city. We do a lot of resolutions. We do some bills, you know, such as e-bikes, etc., and, and, and safety issues. And, but the two most critical things that come out of City Council is housing and, and budgeting. Those are the two critical things that impact upon all communities of New York City. Housing, how much is affordable, and budgeting. Those are the two most critical issues that affect the survival of every community in the five boroughs. And that's what makes it so important. And I decided to run for, for that open seat again. Because I thought I was doing well. I, when I went into the Assembly, there's a learning curve. Even though I had been going to the Assembly as a kid, I wasn't an elected, I was still a kid. Although I had an advantage of learning a lot from childhood that many others unfortunately didn't have. But the, the, the community, so many people asked me to run. I would go to community meetings and town hall meetings and people would ask me, so you need to return to the city. Particularly coming out of a pandemic, particularly suffered, particularly because they felt that they had not been receiving services. And they wanted the best for representation. And they knew me. See, that's the thing, the, the community knows me. They're aware of the work that I've done. It's not what I commit to do. It's not what I promised to do. It's building on what I have already done successfully for the community. Now, you're not gonna be everything to everyone. But if the majority of the people recognize that you have done the very best you can successfully for the community, then they want you to represent them again. And it's, it's a different administration. It's a different mayor. It's a different City Council President than what I was there the first time. But the thing is, I'm familiar with the mayor and the administration. I'm also familiar and know the sitting City Council President. I know many of the sitting, existing City Council members. I also know a lot of the Commissioners and others that work in city agencies. Because my office is still doing quite a bit of work of the City Council as far as constituent issues are concerned, because they come to my office and ask for the help. And so, community asked me to run, and I'm, I'm responding to that.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for sharing that, you know, because that is a huge factor. The, well, I don't wanna jump too far. This is Harlem Network News. I'm Terry Wisdom. I'm here with the Honorable Assembly Member Inez Dickens. We are talking, and this is our series on the race for City Council. And we're having all of the people that are in the race to come and speak so that the community is informed. But before we go further, what are the parameters of, and the boundaries of District Nine? Just so that people know where we're talking about. Because for this particular race, you, you can be a supporter, but you can only vote if you're in the district. So that's another point of clarity.
You can volunteer, you can work, contribute. There's a lot you can do, even if you don't live in the, in the actual district. The bounties of the Ninth Council District comprise of parts of four Assembly Districts. Mostly the 70th Assembly District, which is central Harlem. But there's a part of, not the entire 68th Assembly District, but a part, only a part, less than, less than half of the 68th, because most of it belongs to Council Member Diana Ayala. But a part of the 68th is in the Ninth. A one ED of the 69th is in the Ninth. Of the entire 70th, for the most part, except for a part of, Part D, the West Harlem. And then a part of the 71st, going up to approximately 155th Street. And it's not a square district. It's, you know, it's not square. But I'm just saying approximately up to 155th Street on the north boundary, approximately. Then to approximately 110th, 119th Street. But, but probably 110th Street to the south over to, say Lexington or Park on the east. And depending upon where, in some parts over to St. Nicholas, other parts over to Amsterdam in the Ninth. So like, for instance, Manhattanville is not in the Ninth, but the 3333 is. So, you know, it depends upon where. So it's not, you know, even.
It's not a straight, it's not a straight shot. Okay. And obviously, with even saying that, it's a very complex puzzle. And it's a very complex puzzle of people, different ethnicities, different languages, and therefore different needs.
Yes.
That's what we've gotta look at. And it's concerning, because I mean, in the Congress, we're dealing with the same thing. Not a straight district, which it makes it extremely difficult, but something that at this point in time, that's, that's what we're dealing with. So we've got to address it. I wanted to ask you, Assembly Member Inez Dickens, what are some of the recent issues that have come up in City Council? Our current City Council person is Christian Richardson-Jordan. And prior to Christian Richardson-Jordan, it was Council Member Bill Perkins. What are some of the past issues that they were successful on, you know, helping the community? And then some others where they were not? And I, I wanna get to some specifics, if you can, so that people can really understand the magnitude of some of the issues that we're dealing with. Because some, a, a lot of people are very frustrated. Some have become apathetic in a sense that they feel that there's nothing that can be done. So they do a lot of complaining and maybe don't come in and do or vote. But I think if people can understand what some of the specifics are, it'll help them to really see how these issues and items directly impact them.
Um, you know, Terry, the thing is, is that depending upon what's going on in society within a community and within the city and the state, it varies. For instance, 10 years ago, affordable housing was number one. Today, it's, it's between affordable housing and public safety.
Yes.
You know, so it, it no longer, it, it used to be only affordable housing or income targeted housing, I should say. Now, it's, it's, it's between public, affordable housing and public safety. Because people are so afraid. And they say, the city says the numbers are going down. But, but in the black and brown communities of the five boroughs, they don't see it going down. I get a text from the, my local precincts and from the New York City police about all of the issues. And I doubt if I go one day, that I don't get minimally 10 texts about either stabbing, a shooting, a, 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 jumping onto the train tracks or being pushed onto the train tracks.
Yes.
And it's horrific. So in the black and brown communities, they don't feel like the numbers are going down.
Right. Yes. And, and it's very interesting as you say that, because those are the major issues. And then there are underlying issues which drive those issues. You know, the homelessness, the mental health issues, the drug issues. You know, all of those are underpinnings which deal with disparities. And I'm, I'm happy that you raise that you're getting something about this every day. And I did, you know, just, I was able to interview one of the Foot Patrol, head of the Foot Patrol here in Harlem. They were outside where the shooting took place and the killing of Mr. Brunson right there by the smoke shop at 125th at Malcolm X Boulevard. And, you know, he did say the numbers are going down. You know, I mean, that's a quote. Numbers can be worked around, whatever way you wanna say it. But he said, these are people. You know, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about the people, not the numbers. And I just, as we're here and we're speaking on this discussion, I want Mayor Adams and the team that is looking at the violence to look at Harlem. I know that in terms of the statistics or the numbers, like the areas that you're targeting, or Brooklyn and the Bronx. But Harlem is a smaller place. And so if you do the math in another way, if this percentage of people are being shot and killed, we've had four killings in two days. Then you gotta, you gotta start coming and having all eyes on Harlem. And, you know, as it's been said by Jane Baldwin and others, so goes Harlem, so goes the world. We're a microcosm and we're being looked at. And it's a smaller place. So the percentages are different if in, you know, two days, there's four people that are killed.
And if you, if, if looking at the numbers versus people, if Southeast Queens.
And that's where I grew up.
Harlem, South Bronx, Brownsville. If you look at those communities versus the entire city, the numbers are astronomical.
Right. Yes, not a citywide percentage.
That, that, those numbers are astronomical. And, and in our communities, we don't feel that the numbers are going down. Because we, we see how many people are dying every day in our community due to violence.
Absolutely.
And so it, it, you know, we're saying like, where are these numbers coming from? You know, you're saying they're going down, but where? If you're, you know, talking about in a community down in Chelsea, you know, then maybe the numbers are going down there. But not in the, the Southeast Queens, not in South Bronx, not in Brownsville, not in Harlems, not in those, the black and brown communities of the five boroughs. And so, and, and under health, when you, you spoke about mental health, under health. And that became very critical after we had this COVID. Because we had never been hit, well, I shouldn't say we never. Of course, in, in 1918, there was a pandemic. However, however, most of, you know, those of us that are alive today, for the most part, weren't even aware of the pandemic in 1918.
Right. Until we heard about this pandemic. Once again, shows about what we don't know.
Yes. So we had no idea what, you know, what, that there had ever been a pandemic. Although Bush did open a pandemic office and funded it. I must, I must say that. And every president continued to fund it, including President Obama.
Okay, thank you.
Until, until, until this last man who took office.
Okay, in the form of Donald Trump. Okay, in the form of Donald Trump.
Yes. Trying to think without calling him president.
Right, I hear you.
But yes, now he closed the office and then we had the pandemic. And so that became critical. You know, like I said, it depends upon what's going on becomes number one. And because we were dying at the highest numbers, particularly in the, in, in the South Bronx. Theirs was the highest of all the boroughs.
Right, right.
And so, uh, you know, health became important. And as we, coming out of the pandemic, we now realize that pup, that mental health has been gutted. When I was in the City Council, they were gutting mental health programs. And to the credit of Gail Brewer, who was fighting to try to get, bring funding back into mental health. They closed up all the mental health centers and mental health hospitals and just gutted it. Gutted it like they did cultural. And now we're realizing that that was not the way to go. That we need those mental health centers. We need the help. And, and the pandemic is what brought it to light. And the aftermath of the pandemic is what brought it to the forefront for us to understand the need for mental health and not just because of the violence or domestic violence. And the fact that we are, uh, uh, we're, humans are just naturally uh, we're used to being acclimated around other people. And the pandemic made us stay singularly alone. And that.
Yeah, which impacted. After a lot of development.
Yes. So, you know, under, under, you know, mental health is a part of the health situation that we're talking about. And you had raised that issue about mental health, Terry. And so I just wanted to uh, you know, elaborate a little bit on that. And the fact that we have been, now to the governor's credit, she's um put into her budget, which we have not passed. And to her budget, additional funding for mental health. And that's critical. No one's argued about that. You know, there are other arguments. Uh, because, you know, in the state, um, uh, bail reform, etc., those are state issues. You know, really, the city doesn't impact upon them. That's where they're in the state. Those are state issues. So, you know, the, um, there are other things impacting it partly, but she did put in to her budget additional funding for mental health. So finally, we're beginning to recognize the need, the mental health programs.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for that. There are so, um, so many issues um that are on the table that I would say are hot topics um for District, District Nine. And um, you know, some of them do come under uh the jurisdiction of the City Council person. And I would like you to touch base, we've actually touched base on some of them. But I'm just gonna run down a list. This is Harlem Network News. I'm Terry Wisdom. And this is our uh candidate series where we're asking all the candidates the same questions so that voters can be informed and make their decisions. Um, so the hot topics are. Um, and I, at the top of it, I'm just gonna run down them and then we'll try to address what we can. And um, the, the hot topics are the one forty five project. That's a very hot topic because that is being flagged as uh a project that our city, sitting City Councilperson uh, Christian Richardson Jordan, uh, the, some media, Harlem Patch and others are stating that she didn't handle or vote for the one forty five project effectively. And that's why um the other candidates are coming in. And uh she didn't handle it right and other candidates are, you know, against the way she handled that project. Could you shed some light on the one forty five project? How it was handled, where we are now? Because those that are informed know that that was not singularly a Christian Richardson Jordan uh event. So if you could shed some light on the one forty five project and in your view, where we need to go with that?
The one, the one forty five project wa- was in the workings from, I guess, for five years or more, you know. Before they filed, when they were, you know, talking about it. Uh, when they began to purchase, when the developers began to purchase the land around there.
Right, and that's it, just for clarity, not to interrupt you, one forty five was two towers that the owner, the developer was looking to build right there uh near where uh one forty five and uh the Malcolm X uh Boulevard corridor, right near where the House of Justice is uh.
That was from, really from next to the um supermarket at one forty five and Adam Clayton Powell. All the way to, which was two gas stations. Was, there were no housing there. There was no residential. It was, it was two um gas stations. And then there was um uh some kind of a uh s- store that sold all kind of little stuff. Then there was a um, uh, 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 pizza shop was there. On the corner, there was a, uh, of course, we know the House of Justice was there. And then there was a chicken, uh, chicken, whatever. Um, there was also a um, a uh restaurant. And so that it went from nearly to seventh to the corner of one forty five and Malcolm X and then along Malcolm X um, on about to a hundred and forty fourth street. Yeah, it was like an L shape, but it did not impact any housing. There was absolutely no housing there. Vacant. Um, the stores various times have been vacant. Uh, and this is prior to the developer buying it. Hadn't been taken care of. Um, the, really, the ones that were surviving was the two gas stations. Actually, one, the Exxon was really the prime one. The other one had been going back and forth to one thing or another. Um, and then the restaurant uh was doing, Mom was, I think it was called, uh, rest was, was doing well. And, and, and that was, you know, about it. Um, the developer came in with the idea of buying up that and then renovating um, and building housing. Now, that is within the purview of the City Council. That's a vote of the City Council, not the state.
Okay, City Council issue. Thank you for the clarity.
City Council issue, it's not a state issue, um, other than four twenty one A. So I don't want to confuse people with, because four twenty one A originally was just a housing program under H P G. It ultimately became affordable housing. Now, it wasn't managed correctly. I'm getting off for a second, just for a little clarity for people. But it's necessary because it allows for more income targeted housing than without having a program similar to four twenty one eight. Without four twenty one eight, there hasn't been a shovel that went into the ground for income targeted housing since it died. And that's what we gotta look at. But in any case, I'll move on to one forty five. It, it went, uh, uh, the one forty five project um is grandfathered in with four twenty one eight from the time, I guess, that they had put in their uh application and their, um, for their um uh plans. And it was um they were offering approximately, and this is me trying to remember, um, because it's not my, it was not in my Assembly District. So I wasn't able to send, um, Assembly Member Taylor's district. Is in the ninth Council District. And um, what I did when I was in the City Council, because that's where housing, like I said, those are the two things. Land use and budgeting. Those are the two issues that come out of the City Council, and that's what makes it critical. You, what I did, and I can only talk about what I did. I'm not attacking anybody else's way of handling their business. Of the district. I met with every developer that wanted to do something in my district. Now, there were, when I first took office, there were developments that were being built or had been approved by my predecessor, Bill Perkins. So there was nothing I could do with that. But when, from the time that they were applying under my tenure. Um, I, you know, I asked them to not just bring me plans with pictures of what the partners are gonna, I want numbers. And that's because I come from a housing, small housing background. But even though it may be small housing, it's still all the same. It's, it's understanding underwriting, understanding how you can take how much it's gonna cost to build and how many income targeted units you can have at a reduced A M I. The highest number of units at a reduced A M I. And because of that experience, because of my knowledge, I was able to successfully um be able to deliberate and successfully get the highest, by the time I came out of the City Council, I had gotten the highest number of affordable units in the um City Council during my tenure. It comes from negotiating, the ability to negotiate. I understand the terminology and I understand the numbers. They give me the numbers. I mean, it's all right to give me the pictures, but I want the numbers. What's the cost gonna be? What's the mortgage gonna be? What's your interest gonna be? How much is the, you know, how much are you gonna get for a tax reduction? So that that tells me how many units I can get at a lower A M I. And so, you know, because we are looking for the federal government to put it, federal government is not, like they had, um, HUD had uh, the section eight, all that's dead. So we can forget about the federal government bringing in, you know, a, 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 a whole lot of money. They're not, that's not coming. And so we've got to figure out other ways of being able to develop affordable housing. And, and I mean, I have some other recommendations to the city, whether they've taken it or not. Uh, that would help with uh the reduction of taxes and the city needs taxes. But there's other ways of getting it other than from the small owner. Now, that's not a small development, but it, the larger development gives you the larger number of units at a income targeted. And so it's the responsibility to be truthful of the City Councilperson. And I'm not attacking anyone. I'm saying any City Councilperson. It's the responsibility to negotiate, navigate and understand underwriting and how you can do the calculations. I don't need them to tell me the calculator. I need them to tell me the numbers. I can do my own calculation. And figure it out as to how I can argue with them what I need. And although the City Council requires that eighty twenty. You, you know, you get the numbers and I'll tell you one other thing I do.
When you say that requires the eighty twenty, because a lot of people really don't understand. And then when we're talking about affordable housing, the question and the A M I becomes affordable for who? You know, given what the real income is for many of the black and brown people who are being pushed out, you know, and, and rendered homeless.
Well, at one forty five, there was no housing, so nobody was being pushed out at one forty five.
Yeah, no, I'm saying with the building that um he was, you know, proposing.
But the, but the bottom line is he, uh, that was gonna be approximately fifty percent affordability. And when I say affordability, it was based, when I say affordability, because that can change from, from block to block almost. When you talk about affordability, because in one block, uh, the affordability may be eighty percent A M I and another one, it's, it's forty percent A M I. So you, you know, it goes almost from neighborhood to neighborhood. That's why I frequently use the terminology income targeted. Targeted for the, the, the actual uh neighborhood that the building is being built in or rehabbed in or constructed in. That's why I use the terminology income targeted versus affordability, because that's that varies. So, you know, when people use the word affordable, what block are we talking about? In the case of the one forty five, um, or any income, that is up to the City Councilperson to negotiate. Understand underwriting and to be able to argue, to get maximize what can be gotten. Because we, in, in black and brown community, we need a, a, a income targeted housing. Need more housing. It's just not enough in the city of New York. For the population that this city has, there is woefully insufficient uh, uh, housing that people can actually afford based upon the annual income that they are getting. And so we need to, you know, we, we, we have to, we're forced to really negotiate the hardest that we can. Because we can ill afford to say no to almost any housing. And particularly where it's not displacing anybody. And you know, I, I remind people that even with um Lenox Terrace with Espinard. Um, those displaced, though, when, when, when they were being built, they displaced, you know, ten blocks of, of housing that was actually being built. And they, those people ill afford could, could buy into the Lenox Terrace, or, or not buy into, but rent the Lenox Terrace or buy into Espinard. But, but this was not displacing anyone, the one forty.
Because there isn't, yeah. So it's been um just a, a critical bone of contention. And, you know, in a city, because there's a lot of conversations. This is Harlem Network News. I'm Terry Wisdom and I'm here with our uh candidate Assembly Member, uh, I'm as Dickens. And this is our uh District Nine Council uh person uh series. So, there's a lot to understand. And then I know the uh, the uh developer on one forty five even spoke about bringing in a truck depot. Which I think there's a semblance of that there, you know, and everything in our community is connected.
That was me spirited and nasty and angry because he didn't get what he wanted. And he really didn't even really bring in a full depot, thank.
Oh, I see two trucks out there.
Yeah, but, but I'm just saying, he didn't bring in a full.
Yeah, it's a bully, a bully attack.
Mean spirited uh announcement. Bullion, exa- exactly, bullying.
You all went to junior high school.
He didn't get what he wanted. And I don't know who was telling him, but he shouldn't have even said that.
No, no.
And now the funny thing is, a- a- and it's something that I applaud because now he's reapplied, as you know. And really, the only change he's really put in is he put in uh for a community uh center. And actually, what I've done when I negotiate is part of my negotiation, if it's a uh development that has not retail, but a commercial space, retail on the first floor. Because if I can get maximize the number of income targeted at a lower or A M I, then something has to be able to subsidize it, because the government is not giving subsidy. So the retail is the only thing that can subsidize the residential, because something has to subsidize. Not going to be the government. If we're looking for the government to do it, they're not gonna do it. The retail, so, but if they have commercial space, I usually will ask for some commercial space for a community-based organization, because the, they, they can't afford the rents to try to get like I did for uh Harlem Jets, like I did for um Harlem Mother Save, like I did for space for them in perpetuity. Been successful at getting that done where there is commercial space. Now, where there's no commercial space, then that's something different. But if there's commercial. Because I recognize the retail has to subsidize the residential. But I will ask for some space. And so that's what he changed. In the, that's what the developer, the one for five changed. And now the uh sitting, our incumbent City Councilperson has uh, uh, is, is agreeing to it. Because they, you know, it wasn't at her suggestion, uh, but he did put in um, uh, th- this community space. That, that could have been done from the beginning.
Okay, okay. Well, it's important um that the community understands what's going on. I know that originally, and I wanna just uh not get off of our show without giving a shout out to uh National Action Network and Reverend Al Sharpton. It was an amazing convention, uh, everybody from Tyler Perry to Kamala Harris. Yes, it was a great uh conference uh on uh stopping the violence that was just amazing. Uh, Emerald Garner, uh, our sister Aisha was on, um, Brother Gilly from the Bronx Lincoln, Lincoln Hospital. And I'm, another sister, Kefra from uh Southeast Queens and others. It was very powerful. There was a conference on hip hop. Um, but I was knowing that um a wonderful fashion show. And, you know, our youth, I mean, I, I came out of there saying, does Nanny the start of school? Because the youth was so disappointed. Because the youth was so disciplined, um so exceptional, so full of life. Uh so full of wanting to participate, which shows what arts and culture can do and how fantastic they were. And I mean, obviously, education and the schools um are another issue that we're dealing with, but I.
You know, you know, uh Terry, uh it's important that Nan put forth this convention annually. Maybe semi-annually, to let the public know. And why, and not just the public in New York City, but it's an educational tool for the world to see. And to try to uh uh somehow slow down this nasty hateful malicious growth of hate. That has arisen again in this country. And it shows the the education. It shows, it it brings in people that 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 people ordinarily can hear personally that they might not hear otherwise. And so. And you gotta remember that that Reverend Sharpton has created. An organization, an an international organization that uh the Women's Auxiliary. Lifts up and does their part. His two daughters. Dominique.
Yes, they were amazing.
They formed the youth organization that is fighting hard for the survival. The critical survival of young people. They have worked hard, they're bringing them in, they're teaching them that there is another way to earn money. They're giving them a platform in which to discuss what they think is happening or not happening. And so, you know, he has not, Reverend Sharpton has not said, I can do this autonomously all by myself. He has created the Women's Auxiliary, he's brought in the seniors, he's brought in, the his daughters has taken on. The critical.
Yeah, they were amazing. I was very impressed, very impressed.
Yes. And Ashley, Ashley belongs them to my club and I'm trying to educate her.
Okay, yeah, she. Was amazing. So, you know, I said that, I raised that because I know originally, um there was some plan. And I don't think it was for free, where uh National Action Network was gonna have uh their offices there. As well as uh a civil, I believe a civil rights museum. I don't know.
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's still on the table. But um there's obviously a lot on the table and everything that happens in our community. We need to pay attention to and make sure that it meets the needs of the people. Because in a city like New York City, where the mean rent or something is now four or five thousand dollars a month. Um, that's what we don't understand, because who makes that kind of money? Who can survive? And that um appears to be uh a formula for disaster. Particularly for black and brown people. And then not to mention that we have been inundated. With all of the people coming um across the southern border and being dropped in New York City. So that becomes another factoid of city money. And also, um people getting services that those that are already here are not getting. So it's an issue and a problem. And it's not a throw the stone at those coming across the border. But what about the stones for those that are here that are paying taxes? That are basically being abused. So if you would address that, um we could be talking for three hours. Because there are so many issues, but um if you could address that and then. We'll talk about small business, because small business for black and brown people is pretty well flat. Those are some major issues that we need to talk about.
Well, you know, the city, the city is is uh um. Uh, under Mayor uh de Blasio. Uh, we created what was known as a, you know, a safe city. This is, you know, and so as a result. Um and the federal government, by the way, gave many of the states, particularly states where um the um. Asylum seekers come through, such as Texas, uh such as New York. Where their 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 the the harbors and the airspace is there where they come through um on the land. Um, they got uh a certain amount of billions of dollars. To assist in that. Um, what those other states did, because they were not safe cities. Or safe states, so we're safe cities, only safe cities. What they did is they took part of that money that they received.
What does safe cities mean?
Sanctuary cities.
Sanctuary, gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
What it means is that people um can come from anywhere. And stay safe in that city. In New York City, it's a sanctuary city, which makes it a safe city that anyone can come into. From wherever, um uh because of political or economic or religious. Or uh color disparities.
Okay.
And so that's New York. And so, New York City, I'm talking about not the state.
Thank you.
And so as a result, what Texas and some, a lot of the others, not just Texas, I'm not just targeting Texas. But they, was they take part of the money that the federal government gave them. And they, you know, secured rented buses and put some food in whatever. And and transported them to New York and said, well, you're a safe ci- uh safe city, sanctuary city. You know, we're safe for everybody come. And they sent all of theirs that they're getting, they're sending them here.
Wow.
So, in addition to what would be coming across the borders of New York, through the air, through the sea, through whatever means. We're now getting them from other states as well. So it has become overwhelming, because we're getting five times mu- or more than. Uh what we would ordinarily be getting if we were not a sanctuary city, a safe.
Okay.
So as a result, um the we, the money that we had, we've used up. The money that we received to do such a thing was used up. And the federal government has not given New York more because we decided to be a sanctuary city. You know, they felt like that was your business, that's what you did and that's up to you.
So cities choose to be a sanctuary city? Is that a?
No, that was done under under Mayor de Blasio, we became a sanctuary city.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's just um, it's just very concerning, because it, the issue is more than money. Because the issue is space. If there's not enough housing for those who.
Already.
Yeah, then bringing in other people, you know, and I know, you know, for a fact. That there are people who have come and who have been able to assimilate. Into like in Long Island, in the areas of Southampton, and they kind of fought it back. But a lot of the people, black and brown people who have come. Uh, you know, from other countries are doing extremely well out there. You know, they uh have been able to get their kids in school, they are working, they have worked collectively and living in great housing. There's space, there's fresh air, there's backyards, you know, and I mean, it does depend, you know, some people want to be in the city. But we've gotta look at it, and I don't know if this is a city council issue, but we're nearing the end of our hour. Um, I'm very grateful for you coming and sharing. We shed a lot of light. We obviously have a lot of knowledge, um but I would like you, in your closing statement. Um, in this city council series, to also address small business. Because it appears particularly that black and brown small businesses. Particularly here in District Nine are very, very much on the decline. And that has to be looked at and, you know, as well, which is a whole other topic. We now have all the smoke shops, which were already here before the legalization. And there was crime happening. People are making lots of money on this and there's harm coming to people.
All right, I'll start, I'll start with the small business. I come from a small business background, so I've always tried to be an elected. I was volunteering as a district leader, as a county committee, as a state committee, as a judicial delegate. Where you got, you didn't get paid. I volunteered. I didn't just jump up and say, run, you know, I'm running, elect me. I volunteered for twenty-five years, or more than that, because I was born into volunteerism. But it the small, I come from a small business background, so I'm acutely aware of the deficiencies. That are hitting our small businesses. Uh, New York State and New York City is not protective of our small businesses. Now, in black and brown communities, our small businesses hire from within the the community. Because usually they can only have one or two employees anyway. It's not like, because see, the federal definition of a small business. Is is if you're making five million dollars and more. Well, our small businesses are not making that. Our small businesses are really micro small businesses.
Yes.
Micro, because we're not making that kind of money. And more do we have the capability of the technology of today. And we fall into uh traps that we wind up being hit with fees and 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 penalties. And we are losing our businesses, because we're not, this this government, this administration nationally. Is is not, and in New York State, they're not fighting for the small business, which is the. The the foundation of the survival. That's how the dollar circulates. In other communities, the dollar circulates ten times. In black and brown communities, it circulates on the average two and a quarter times. Do you see the difference? And so it's it's a terrible situation uh that is hitting our small businesses. The black and brown small businesses across the city and the state. And we have not done legislation that helps them. You know, we really have not, and that's the city council responsibility. Uh while I was in the city council, I fought hard for small business. I fought hard for the creation and the protection of small businesses and the help that small businesses need. Um Harlem Business Alliance, um I don't know whether they still do, but for years, they had a class to help small businesses. They used to have an annual, and I think they still do, an annual um town hall or forum. In which you can come in and ask questions. Under the city council, uh I used to have an annual. Um uh of town hall where I had various city agencies to come in. And that, when I talk about small business, I'm talking about small homeowners as well.
As well, thank you.
Because they they the 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 laws uh protect those that are three family unless. But the average brownstone has seven units. The 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 owner may occupy the bottom, like I know a woman on one thirty-eighth street, she occupies, she's blind. She's the owner, her husband died, left it to her. She lives alone, she lives on one unit, she's got six other units. She's not protected at all. Because the rent regulations are for s- s- uh for three units or less. And so that 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 means when we lose our small businesses, be it small housing or other businesses. Retail businesses or even not-for-profit businesses, when we lose out, we're gonna be moved out of the community. And there is a political movement to do just that in our black and brown communities. So that we lose political empowerment, so that we're moved out. Because when they, when they move us out, they're gonna take over by blocks. And what they're gonna build, we're not gonna be able to live in. So we've got to understand, there is a political movement. That's done in black and brown communities only, that negatively impacts upon our small business. Be it small housing and small businesses, the same thing. It's the destruction and the not allowing for us to have the generational wealth that everybody else craves.
Right.
Yeah, it's very, very. Smoke shops, that is smoke shop. There, there is a particular smoke shop, by the way, on a hundred, uh on Malcolm X Boulevard, between one twenty-fifth and one hundred and twenty-fourth Street. The owners of that building are also the owners of the building where the state is proposing to put the dispensary.
Okay, thank you for that clarity, because that's a factoid.
Same owners. And I have fought that, not that I don't want a dispensary in in Harlem. And I want one that's owned by a black. And see, people gotta understand, these licenses are very difficult to get. And yes, they're saying that they want them initially for those that have been impacted, been arrested and gone to jail. On small amounts of marijuana, et cetera, but they there there are, they set up, the state sets up. A financial um um entity, I'll call it. That actually puts in the money as a loan. In order to build out and get the initial supplies, but they're to be paid back. That's an investment. Because they don't have the money. So we got to understand, they're not giving us anything. I don't want people to think, oh, I get a license and I'm giving them something. So untrue.
Okay.
Um, we have been inundated with drug programs. Now, drug programs, this is not anti-drug program, they are absolutely necessary. But we've got to provide additional funding to them, that they have programs. The unions could put programs in each one of the drug programs, so that the the patients stay inside. And learn something that.
Yes, they get some.
They have a job opportunity, and then they shouldn't be roaming the streets all day long. And that's what's happening. They come into the drug programs, they pick up whatever drugs they're getting, and then they go back on the street and either get high or sell it. And it's, we are, it's a saturation. And I have a piece of legislation uh that the East Harlem Block Association, Eva Chan. Uh and Sean Hill had helped me with in drafting. Not that it would would be able to stop what has been done, because those are privately owned. But it would stop any further saturation coming.
Yeah, very, very, very critical. Um, these are just intense, robust conversations. Important that people understand the truth. Um, this has been very empowering, um because as we look block to block. In District Nine, even the uh smoke shops or illegal smoke shops, bodegas. Most of those are owned uh by different people, not black and brown people, you know.
And are being service, Terry, come from all over, they come from Staten Island, they come from.
Yeah.
They are coming, they're not just Harlem residents.
Right, the people coming to the drug dispensaries.
If this program services a thousand people a day, then at twelve noon, a thou- thousand times ten are put out on the street.
Yeah, yeah, so there's there's the critical dispensaries and the drug programs. Then there are the small businesses that are the illegal smoke shops. And the ones that uh, you know, are bodegas, but when we look at it. And I will say, black people, you know, are not the ones who are owning these smoke shops. Or the quote bodegas. Um, it's a lot of people from a lot of other countries. You know what I'm saying? You know, be it, um, you know, somewhere in the Middle East, Yemen, you know, um. So we've got to really look at that. What's happening to the people that are here? Because the black people are not owning the businesses that they own. You know, they have lost them, and that is something to look at. I know that um the mayor has um set up a a new division. Uh where Michael Garner is the chief business.
Congratulate him, because he did a marvelous job. Not only at MTA, but prior to that, he has done a marvelous job at creating and sustaining. Programs that allow um MBEs to be able to benefit.
Okay.
I'm I I'm hoping and I'm expecting that he will be able to do the same thing.
We are looking for that.
It's a, it's a new sheriff in town.
Okay.
You know, it's it's a new new mayor, so it depends upon the the uh the the finances that's allowed to him. And as well as the other opportunities that are shared with him, that will allow Michael Garner to do what he was able to do. At at these other places that he was located at. So I congratulate the mayor on the selection. And I'm grateful to Michael for agreeing to accept that position. Because if he does just half of what he did at these others, he will do an amazing job to protect small black and brown businesses.
Okay, well, thank you very much and definitely, um, I know that I believe the signature period is over. And I trust that you're officially on the ballot and uh the uh the the um. June is the primary time or?
Yes, exactly, June, June, I think it's June twelfth. To the, I think it's June seventeenth to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, yes.
June twelfth, is the first, the first week in June is the early voting.
Okay.
And and you have to also go online if you want to have your ballot sent to you. It's not no longer just absentee ballot, it's if you want um to vote um uh by mail. You have to send in an application.
Okay.
That automatically sent to you, you have to send in an application for each election. For a ballot to be sent to you. No longer just absentee, because you're gonna be in the hospital, gonna be out of the country. It's now if you want to vote by mail.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for sharing that, and we certainly are gonna be uh doing uh some initiatives. Uh some initiatives, so people know what the cutoff is, if they're not registered. So that they can make sure um whether or not they are in District Nine. You know, so they can uh, you know, have the choice of voting for all of the candidates as well. So um. We have a lot of homework to do, but uh we're standing up and we thank you for sharing so much knowledge in this series. So uh we so far have been able to interview and give the questions to Dr. Yusef Salam. And now to you, honorable Assembly Member Inez Dickens, and we will be looking uh in the coming week. To speak with Reverend uh Al Taylor, Assembly Member, and our condolences once again. He's in our prayers and uh we are also reaching out to our city civil, city council member. Uh Christian Richardson Jordan. We hope that uh she will join us. And uh I know that there's a forum coming up, I believe on the twenty-seventh. Three of the candidates at least. To to speak. So, public, get in there, get your information, so that you can uh. Vote uh with knowledge and with purpose and intention. So thank you so much.
Thank you, just, thank you very far, agreeing to have you on Harlem Network News. Keep the news alive, the truth.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's what we do, that's why we're here. And we're so inspired by you and. The other candidates and all of the people um that just keep us alive and keep us getting the information. And like I said, I was uplifted. Being at the National Action uh Network Convention. I've learned so much and I'm sharing that with the public. So on Instagram, Facebook, YouTube, uh please support us. You can make donations or if you have story ideas. I'm at six four six two six one five three nine seven, HarlemNetworkNews@gmail.com or HarlemNetworkNews.com. Thank you and have a blessed.
Have a blessed week ahead and stay safe.
Absolutely strong and safe. Have a good day. Take you, thank you.